Hey guys, welcome back to another session of Kubernetes. And today we're going to be covering the backup restores and pretty much saving snapshots. I did have a lot of issues with this one. It's a bit difficult for me to grasp. But we were able to restore it at the end, so hopefully I can teach you guys. And um, guys don't have to spend as much time as I did on it. So backup and restore as any other system administrator role, you're gonna want to have backups for all of your infrastructure in case of disaster recovery and any other issues that go on. And with Kubernetes, there's several ways that we can save our configuration to then be able to restore. Restore it. The simplest way is to have a code repository like GitHub and save all of the configurations for all of your different resources there. So this is you're saving the declarative configs. Yeah, I can pull one up, K get pods, see what we got here. Okay. Nodes. Dash. Oh yeah, well. Pretty much you're saving this configuration files to your repository of choice. And usually those repositories, you'll have some kind of replication setup. So in the case that you lose it, you can always restore it. The way you would go about restoring is they just K create and use the file, this file to go ahead and create, create all those resources again. This uses the API server, so keep in mind that if you don't have the underlying infrastructure, you won't be able to use this uh, this way. And the easiest way that people usually, the most simple way that people usually use it is just K get all and dash capital A to get all resources in all namespaces. And we can then have it spit it out in a YAML output as we did previously. And we can then pipe that over to a file, let's save it as configs dot YAML. And now we have our configs here that is gonna have all of our different resources in here. So we can go ahead and do a K create to restore from this. Of course, you won't want to save it on this, this computer, because it's computer, you might lose this computer. So we would want to save it in a code repository. Also, it allows other team members to use this file as well. Okay. Uh, the other way that we can restore, restore the configs for our Kubernetes clusters will be using the HCD. HCD service, which um, HCD is the data store that stores all of the different configurations for your Kubernetes cluster. So anytime you use, you do a Kube API call, it is going through the HCD service server and checking those configuration, making changes there. Then the Kube scheduler can build stuff depending how, what the data store says. So this is what we're going to be doing in this exercise here is we're going to be saving a snapshot of the HCD server and then restoring from the snapshot. Alright, so we could go ahead and get started. We'll just go through the different questions here. And yeah, do we have any questions so far? Or comments?
All good.
Alright. Go ahead, they're asking, we work at Kubernetes, set of web application. Let's explore the setup. How many deployments do we have in the default namespace? So for that, it'll be K get deployments. And as we can see here, we have two deployments, creating five pods altogether. And what's the version of HCD running on the cluster? To do that, I simply just described the HCD cluster or is HCD pod? Let me try to grab this. One D P version. I've actually grabbed it, so let's see what it looks like in here. The image 3.5.7, we could grab image next time to save us some time. Okay, while we are here, they're asking us for the address that it can be reached. And you see it here, listener client URLs 127 dot O dot O dot 12379. And this is the same address, this is loopback address. So yeah. And we don't have the options for the 192 here, so it's gonna be the 127. And the default port seems to be 2379, keep that in mind. When the HCD server certificates, look, where is this located? That should be also notated here. We're looking for the server certificate, which is up here, cert file. PKI HCD. And this is the default directory that all of the certs are stored in, it's the Kubernetes PKI HCD. For the CA one. You can read it down here in case that it is change, is not the default one. Alright, so this is where I got tripped up. So they're asking us to create our backup and store that backup in this file here. Uh, for that, we come over to our trusty documentation and I'll just show you what I searched for to get to this. Uh, we could just do, I think you could just search HCD, but I always searched the HCD backup. This is the first one, operating the HCD cluster. It has all the information on the HCD cluster, how you can back it up, how you restore. Some other information as well. Uh, something to note here is when you're using the HCD utility, we want to have it set to use the API three. Or you won't get some of the options that are here. So the easiest way to do that is we could just copy this, we can export it, so we don't have to put it in front of every command. And exporting just sets it as an environmental variable. So you just need knows that to use the third API, the version, API version three. Any questions on that? Okay, so building a snapshot, backing up, you saw under the backing up HCD cluster, we're trying to set up our backup. So this is, this is what we want right here. We're going to use the HCD control utility to do exactly that, make a snapshot of your backup. And you were gonna need all this information from our current HCD, HCD pod configuration file. So we'll go ahead and sure there's the next one. Rep. Let's say 20. And command. Cert. Perfect. And filling this out. CA cert. As we saw earlier, our CA cert is gonna be done here, trust the CA file. That. Cert. They appear the cert file. And lastly, we need the key. Gonna be right here. Key. And then we need to snapshot. Leave it saved. Yep, and the location we want to save it to. Good. With that, we have our snapshot. You can of course automate this, have it set up in a, in a, what do you call those?
Cron job.
Yeah, there you go, in a cron job, so it's um, so you don't have to manually set up your backups every time. Alright, once you have that, let's go ahead and check mission that is correct. But they go through and they, they break our configurations. As you remember, previously we had our deployments. They want us to check our deployments now, and really we can just do K get. All. Yeah, that should be fine. You can see we don't have anything, even if we do K get all dash A. Really is just like, is just a system stuff that's still running. All of the pods are gone, as far as like the, our deployment pods. So we don't have deployments present, there's no pods and no services outside of the default Kubernetes services and pods. So we're gonna go ahead and hit all the above. So now, they want us to restore from our backup. I am probably gonna butcher this, but we'll, we'll see, we'll see how it goes. Alright, so when restoring for my backup, there's two things to note. The first thing is we're gonna need to turn off or restart our API server. You run into issues if you try to do a restore while having the API server running. And you end up losing pretty much the whole config. I couldn't, every time I, I started out doing it with the API server running and yeah, you don't, you end up losing all of your pods, including the pods from your system. So don't do that. Or you're gonna screw up your infrastructure. Now, the other thing I wanted to mention is that, that I missed at some point is that we do have to edit the HCD to point it, the HCD part to point it to the new directory that is gonna be used to get data from. I'll show you what I mean by that. Nope, come back over here. And we want to do the restoring HCD cluster. So as you can see here, you just um, okay, so the one thing is, we wouldn't want to use this because of the fact that we wanna, don't want to override the current um, data directory. Want us to create a new data directory to store our backup in. PJ, would you mind, if you know the answer to this, why do we need to use a different data directory?
Um, that's a good question. I'm not entirely sure as far as why. Um, I do know when you try to like do a restore and that directory, for example, is not empty, it causes errors, but I'm not sure as far as with the whole process of, you know, why? Or is it like some metadata in there that it needs to go ahead and, and generate for it to be a valid, you know, backup or anything? I honestly really don't know. That's a, that's a good question though, for us to find out.
Yeah, but either way, I believe that you would use this if you just have a fresh cluster setup to restore to. But in the case that we're restoring over one that we already have, yeah, you want to create a different data directory. So let's go ahead and do that. We don't have to add this to the star because we have that as an environmental variable. Yeah, go ahead and. The, oh, but before we do that, we would want to stop the Kube API server. So doing this, I learned a new, what would you call this? New service, new binary that I could use, is a cry CTL. And we can use cry CTL to view all of the pods without actually using the API server. Which that's useful in the case that, because we're gonna be shutting down the API server. So kube cuddle is not gonna actually work. So, and another thing we can actually, we can, well, I'll show you that later. So right now we want to turn off the Kube API server, so let's go ahead. As if you guys remember from one of our previous sessions, the Kube API server is one of the pods that is, one of the static pods that is created by the kublet. And to edit that one, we would need to go over to the manifest file. Pat asked, in summary, you can't override the current cluster. Uh, that, that's the gist of it. There's probably a more elegant way to explain that, but yeah, you wouldn't want to override your current cluster. So you would want to have that data, data directory set up separately. Alright.
Very cool.
Let's go. Alright, we're gonna be editing our manifest file for our Kube API server. And I am doing this so that we can pretty much turn it off. They, they said that we could use the service uh, stop command, but I could not find, like, we don't have Kube API server in here, so I was not able to do this way. But this is the way that I found that I can do it is in. Dash, let's see. Kubernetes. Manifest. API. And we're just gonna break this file. Cert, hashtag. That can do a watch command on this. And eventually the API server should shut down because it's gonna try to run the command.
Mm-hmm. And you can, you can also, if you don't want to touch the file, you can just move it outside of that directory as well, so you can like move it back a directory and then it won't see the, the manifests and then it'll just drop the pod and then you can just put it right back to.
That, that is another option, yes. But uh, what I found with Code Club with these directories, moving the file actually just deletes it. Uh, every time I've tried to move it in the past, it just deleted the, the whole file and I've had to restart the whole.
Oh, wow.
So there is a workaround, you could just copy the file instead and then delete it from the original place. But it's just, this seems to be the easiest way.
Okay, okay, cool. No, good to know, good to know.
And as you can see here, uh, the Kube API is now gone. And if we try to do any K get pods, we get an error because there's no API server. But we can always use cry CTL. Uh, do you, does anybody know what, what program uses cry CTL? Like a container thing? Docker thing?
Yeah, not sure.
That's okay, I'll look into it at some point. Alright, so I did also mistype K get pods, but just so people are confused, even if you type it correctly, it's still not gonna get you nothing. Alright, so now that we've turned off the API server, we want to restore from the snapshot. So we're gonna follow this documentation here. And we're gonna restore from the snapshot into a different directory, we can call it. It's gonna be for that's HCD, this is the usual directory that is used, we can do backup. And snapshot restore, yep, snapshot. Store. At, we save it up something, up snapshot. Alright. So, once we've restored the backup, we then want to point the new HCD cluster to use this backup. So the way we're gonna do that is we're gonna edit that manifest file for the HCD pod, not cluster. And this is where I was missing, I was only editing the volumes. And this is something that we have to change, we need to point these volumes from the old directory to the new one. So backup. On here. But up here, you also have to specify the directory as well. Okay. To me, once you do that, it should restart it. Be still restarting. There it is, four seconds ago. And the Kube Control Manager and Schedule will also restart once they see that their HCD has restarted. So that's normal. And now that we have our HCD up, we can go ahead and get our API server back up. Alright, so do so, we're just gonna go back and edit our manifest file for our Kube API. That. And looks like it's already up. Once it is up, we should be able to K get pods, ah, okay. Good. So we're able to restore our pods. And yeah. This took me like freaking two days to get, get it, but once you, once you figure it out, you got it, you, you won't, you won't struggle at it anymore. But um, does anybody, I know this is, this is a lot, but does anybody have any questions or anything that you want me to go over again?
That was good. I enjoyed that, different, different way of doing it, but um, nonetheless, it's uh, pretty cool, pretty cool, so great job.
Cool. PJ, do you mind sharing the different ways that you do this?
Um, it's not too different, honestly. Only difference is I might have, I would just copy and paste everything in there in the, like, you know, you did the thing that I would do as far as doing the um, to grab the HCD file and just use the command. Um, grab the command and then like get the 20 lines after, so you have like all of the required sections. Um, and then I'll just literally, if you go back into your, the documentation, um, the documentation page where you can do the actual backup.
Yep, uh, back to backup, right here?
Yeah, so I would start from like copying the line, including the, the backslash. And then I would just paste it in there, so the CA cert, I'll just like, you know, delete it and stuff. So that's, that's just my manual approach, just so to avoid any like, you know, potential errors in there. Um, and just to save some time, because you know, time is very important with this stuff. So that's just my approach, of course, you know, but I wouldn't copy the full thing, you know, I will copy like line by line.
That's what I was about to say, because that's the issue that I was running into when I copied the whole thing. And why I switched to do it that way is, yeah, because I don't know how you could traverse. Once you have it in there on different lines, I don't know if you could go back to the previous line and edit it.
Yeah, exactly. So when I, yeah, exactly. So I just copied from like the first line, second line, and then the third line. It doesn't really copy, so I just go that route, then I just fill in the stuff there. Because sometimes my mind just goes blank and I'm like, okay, CA cert, let me copy CA cert first and then paste it in there before I delete the actual, you know, trusted CA file information after the equal sign. But yeah, that was just my thing, I'm doing that. But yeah, that's pretty much exactly how I would do it as well, uh, you know, you did it perfect, so um, yeah, yeah.
Pat, Pat, did you have a comment concern, question?
Nah, you know, this is looking good. I just can't wait to actually get into it, added to, to the Rubicon cloud.
Yeah, 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 that's gonna be dope. Alright, um, so that completes the lab here for our backups. And well, the first part, and we have a second part down here. This one gets uh, looking good on time, so they, this one gets a little bit more involved. I have not actually finished this one, so we're all gonna be learning together today.
It does.
Yeah.
Yeah, just feedback, I mean, you can always edit this out, but after each section like that, like method one, maybe like a recap, like just a quick recap, hey, you know, X, Y, Z, and then, you know, just kind of sum it all up.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Me too.
Yeah, um, just a quick recap of the previous section that we went over are our ways that we can restore our backups for Kubernetes. Uh, one of them being from config files, but by backing up all of your resources to a code repository. And the second one being by backing up your HCD server using this snapshot command that's built into the HCD program. Alright, with that, we can start on part two here. Alright, so in this environment, we're gonna look at multiple clusters and practice backing up HCD databases. The ending of it is the same, is just now we have multiple clusters that we're gonna be working through. And it adds a bit of nuance to it, where you gotta just pay attention to what, where you're working out of. So we're working on student node. Uh, this is not a control plane and blah, blah. Well, I checked the cluster they has access to, so we can do that by K config. Uh, get closer, yep, get cluster. And that should show we have access to two clusters here. Okay. Okay, so that's pretty much. Yes, that's gonna find me clusters we have access to, so we got two here. How many nodes do both control plane worker are part of cluster one? Make sure you switch context, and the context is we're gonna be able to switch between the different nodes here or the different clusters. Make sure you switch context, and the context is we're gonna be able to switch between the different, um, nodes here, or the different clusters. So let's go ahead, we can just copy this command here, and under, when you're taking the test, they are gonna make full use of this, so make sure you're working out of the right context. Or you might not have the right answer. Nope, we're in our cluster one, and they want us to check how many nodes we have here, K, get nodes. So, we have two nodes. Okay. Uh, what is the name of the control plane node in cluster two? Uh, we're just gonna switch to the second one. And K, get nodes again. Cluster two, and they want us to check the control plane node, which is gonna be this guy here, cluster two dash control plane. Right here. Easy enough, alright, so we can SSH between the different clusters, and here they give us the command to SSH. They give us the domain name, the FQDN, whatever, the name for the, for the cluster. And to get back to studio now, we're gonna exit, yeah, standard SSH, no keys required on this one, they make it pretty simple for us. So how is ECD configured on cluster one? For that, we're gonna have to jump onto cluster one and look at the ECD file, so let's go ahead and. But they gave it to us. Let's sage to cluster one. And as we were looking at before, we're gonna just edit the, let's see. Maybe this manifest, let's see the file. Oh, sorry. Figured, for this, we're actually gonna, I'm sure we can find it here, the way I know how to find it is actually by checking the API server configs. API. And it will have all of our ECD stuff right here, and as you can see, it's using the loopback address, which means the ECD cluster is stacked. Which that just means is, is within the cluster itself, and it's not outside of it. And stacked. And let's get out of here, and they want us to do the same thing on cluster two, so let's go exit that. And to sage to cluster two. And we're going to. Then we're gonna do a cat, dash ECD. Manifest, Q API. Now we're gonna do a grab. By. C D. Alright, so as you can see here, well, I guess I do have to show you the whole thing to explain it. My bad. Alright, so, this is why I wanted to show you the whole thing is, as you can see, here's our ECD server. And it is gonna be, I don't know, IP address 182.3.99.23. While our API server, we can see is at 3.99.12, therefore, this is gonna be an external ECD server. Just cuz it's not actually running on the cluster itself, any questions on that, or comments? Alright, keep on trucking, what is that IP address of the external CD class? Okay, so we're looking at it here, 182.3.99.23. And what is the default data directory used for ECD data store used on cluster one? Remember, this cluster is used as a stacked ECD topology, make sure to. Switch context, so let's go ahead and open another terminal, probably the easiest way. And we can do, uh. Well, we're gonna wanna jump onto. Is there an easier way to do this? Let me see. Please, I'm curious. If. Scroll. If I can get this information without going on the machine. Yes, we can, here it is, dear directory, verlib, ECD. Perfect. The subsequent question, you will need to log into the external CD server to do this, open your terminal. And jump onto ECD server. Okay. What is the default data, or ECD data store using cluster two? So I'm, I have not looked at this, I wanted to check. What does it look like on here? Right there, scroll apart. Yeah, so it CD doesn't actually show in here, okay, so as I said, we have to actually SSH to it, so let's go ahead and SSH. Here's our IP, we can just use that. Two, that three, that nine. Twenty-three. Now, all I'm doing right now is I am SSHing to the ECD, the external ECD server. Perfect. Alright, and they want us to find a default data directory. With that, we can do FPS to get all the processes that are running on this, dash EF. And. Can grab for ECD. Alright. So, default data directory, the, the, the data directory, ECD dash data. Verlib, verlib CD. Okay. How many nodes are part of the ECD cluster that ECD server is a part of? So, for that, we need to find the members of this cluster, and that is gonna be part of. This documentation as well. Here we go. So, wanna find the members list here. So, we will need to. Yeah, cuz we are on the server, they don't have that environment variable, I don't think. So we'll have to, we'll just go ahead and copy this command. Think for me is gonna be easier to just, we need the cert key, uh, CA cert. Gonna go ahead and just type that out. Dirt. And we're gonna grab.
Remember, it's also in that, yeah, it's up there too, that you can copy it to.
Oh, can I, well, it's, it has a different format, right? Can I still use that?
Yeah, I don't think the, the format necessarily is gonna, it has to be like in a certain, um, in a, in a certain placement. Um, but, I mean, it's worth a try, just take a look, but is that the endpoint, is that endpoint correct though?
No.
Okay.
And I was gonna get that error, I, I did the same thing earlier, I was gonna get there and know exactly what to do, uh, the endpoint is gonna be. One into the twenty-three, pretty much where we're at.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, we can even just use loopback on this.
Yeah, true.
Hold that one. Cert. Dirt file. I'm curious why the cert file is a dot PAM. That normal?
Yeah, that's okay.
This thing, cuz I, I, when I see that PAM, those are keys usually, which I guess, that makes sense. Alright, cert, get our key. Uh, we need our CA cert. T cert.
Yeah, trust the CA, it's right, it's the second line.
The come line.
Yeah.
Uh, can I, have you already tried just copying this whole thing?
I think it's, I mean, I, I don't see why it wouldn't work, but I think the one, you have them different, you know, like you have. Your, the current one you have, they're not set up like that, so I don't know if that would be a problem, like, you know, your dash space, so, I mean. You can just remove this space if you want.
It's fine, if we get in there, we'll get in there, and then we can fix it.
Yeah, I, I'm actually curious to see what it would do.
And members list. Member list.
Member list, cool.
Alright, there it is, okay, so let's go ahead and just. So there.
Doesn't like it.
Think it has to be CA cert. So we have here, see, sir.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Alright, so here we go, and it's showing us that we only have one member. So. Only one. Perfect. Alright, take it back, this is where I got stuck. Uh, take a backup of ECD on cluster one, and save the student node at Pat, and this is pretty much, we're doing the same thing we did earlier. We just gotta make sure we're on cluster one, so let's go and jump back over here. Clear, well, cleared it for us. Alright, SH. We can do it from here, I think, actually. Alright, use the right context. Alright, take it back, oh, ECD on cluster one, save it on a student node, or the path, alright, so back to taking backups. That one is an internal one, so we can use their, this IP right here. And do, as you mentioned earlier. Thing, I'm gonna have to rewrite this. Cuz we want to K, scribe. And. And stem. Pod. And we're gonna do 20 lines after command. Perfect. Word. Cool. Alright. Let's see. Okay. A file. There here. Grab our cert. And our key. Yeah, that's what threw me off, it's usually at that cert file. And snapshot, we wanna save it in the directory that got us up here. Alright. File. File directory. If the files are on the other cluster, right? Oh, interesting, okay. So. Wanna do, wanna SSH. Over to the other cluster, which was.
Get that one nine two.
Yeah, you can just, yeah, I can just jump to the IP address, one eight two, that three, that nine nine, that nine. Alright, so we can do the same command, I just gotta figure out how to get these files back over to.
Yeah, you could do like a SCP, you can do SCP command after if you need. Um. I didn't like it.
Hmm, well done, I didn't copy it correctly, right?
Oh, I don't, does that one have the, um, version three? In the environment variable?
That's what it is. Alright, try the same thing, cool.
There you go. And then, yeah, do SCP. And then. The, um, the, the name of the file, I believe, it's, no, no, okay, it's SCP, um, the IP address, I believe, or something like that, let's do SCP slash H, let's just look at it, cuz I haven't done it in a while. Um. Okay, so SEC, SCP, um, just put the IP address, I guess, cuz I don't know what user we're using.
Okay.
So it's user at host, so just put, uh.
Need that IP address, right?
Yeah. Um, no, we had the IP already though, right? Oh, no, 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 for, for this one, for the student node, yeah, you can do it, IPA. Um. And that's a broadcast, um, the I net one right before it. You, you, you're in same line, same line here is on, the, that one, so it's a slash six. The, uh, that one, so it's a slash six.
Okay.
So like, yeah, dot six. So, so you can S S H back into the other one and then.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then, actually, backspace. You're gonna put a colon? Um.
Port number for this?
No, you don't need the port, just put the, the name of the file. I believe it's the name of the file there. A user at host one, file one, and then.
You were the file, okay.
You know what? Okay. And this is good troubleshooting, I haven't done this in a while, so S C P, and then you're gonna put the file there, so S C P is gonna be the, the file name, so the ops, cluster DB before the one nine two, cuz we're local, so we're going from local on the control plane to the actual, um, uh, to the student one node, so you do S C P, space, and then the four slash op cluster one DB.
And then location, you're gonna be the location of where it's going.
Yeah, exactly, and then IP address, and then. And then, yeah, then where do you want that to be located at?
We can use the same directory.
Yeah, exactly, I, I think that should. Is it okay? Oh, that's for password, try, um, exit it. Like control. Yeah, what user are they using, like do, um, who am I, something? Root. Okay, yeah. I don't know, this is the best way to do it, um, exit it, like exit it, like control C or something, go, but, go up again? Like press up, find the previous command, and then put, um, root at one nine two dot three and see if that works. Cuz it should give you, what, really? Don't need the password, oh, that sucks. Um.
Leave the student, on the student node.
Okay, we need to make sure the context is all student nodes, search the cluster one. You can't move it. That's odd, uh. I'm curious to see where they want the solution to be then. If it's not a C P.
Backup file location. Can I just put the, hold on, can we do this? Curious.
Like the actual IP, um.
Nine of six. Wouldn't be that simple. Okay. Other ways to move files between. Cases.
It has to be S C P, man, um.
It is S C P.
I mean, I'm thinking it, it's, um, S C P, I. Um. Cuz that node is not local, it has to be secure copies over there. Okay, let me see the command, S C P, op cluster root, uh. Um, what is usually a full call password?
F T P is what I was thinking of, so let's give that a shot.
Yeah.
It's the same, is this pretty much the same command, right? Just with F T P?
Um, I haven't used F T P in, um, in such a long time, so I don't know if it's any different.
Ah, okay.
Uh, they don't have it.
I don't think they want us to use it if they don't got it on here.
Yeah, um. I'm curious where they want that to be, um. Where is their usual password? Cuz it's password, password is login.
They give us the password at some point? Hmm. I mean, we can just create a, a key, right?
Uh, yeah, but I don't think it.
We have to pass the public key, just copy that, yeah, let's just do that.
Hmm. Restore, transfer the backup. Okay. It has to be S C P, man. That's super odd. Yeah, things like S S H kitchen, um. Is it minus I? I don't think it is, i- i- this is what it wants us to do.
No, it's definitely isn't.
Yeah, like.
I'll just try and get through it.
Yeah, I mean, it wa- I, I, I know you wanna like solve it, but I, I know S C P has to be the way that, that's the, prefer the, the way that we would do it in a row, well, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Um, especially if you already have the passwordless login and stuff set up, that is so odd that it's not like, it doesn't like it, root at one ninety-three, um. Yeah, it shouldn't need, um, it's cluster.
Actually, now that I think about it, can we just do an S C P to pull the file over?
Yeah, that. We can, you know, push it from there.
That IP address here.
Yeah, let's try that. Think we got it earlier, it was like I P A, um, what's it, it was, it was dot six, I think, or?
Dot nine.
Or ninety-nine. Well, I think we would have needed that one, would we? But that's its own.
What do you mean?
I, I get what you're saying, I get what you're saying, do your thing, do your thing.
Then the file name. Wanted to be. There we go.
Ah, okay, so we just.
So we just have a key going one way.
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
There you go, good job, man.
Alright, so. Let's see what they got us go, doing now. Uh, an S C D backup for cluster two is stored at op cluster two D B. Use a snapshot to carry out restore on cluster two to a new path. Variable live S C D data dash new. Once the store is complete, ensure that the control plane components on cluster two are running. Natural was taken when they were, I've just created a critical namespaces on cluster two, these objects should, they will post a store. Need to make sure you use the context to cluster two, okay? So. Let's start by, we're gonna go ahead and S, get out of this one. Exit, S H. Well, we need that P. For cluster two. So, let's go ahead and context. Please. Two and key scribe. Oh, cuz we have, we need the API server. Key, no. Cat. Let's see. See. Yes, dash E F. Oh, I'm sending the student note. Okay. Describe the P I server. Right now, I'm trying to find. The IP address of our. C D cluster, for our, over our cluster, actually. To move, so should be able to S H to that. There we go, okay. So, once we are here on the cluster. We need to redo a restore. We're just gonna follow the documentation that we have up here, and we wanna restore it to this directory here. Alright, that should be simple enough. So, let's go ahead and get the P I three. Or. Right. Store. But before we restore, let's go ahead and stop that, it's the P I server. Interesting. Okay. Yes, it's still running. Give it a second, it should drop off. It's gone. Okay. P I server is down, let's go ahead and do the restore. To where our backup is stored. The. It's not there. Backup for cluster two stored at.
At the, at the leading, um, four slash? I'll put it right here.
Oh, okay. It's not there, so I'm wondering if it's on student node. It is.
Yeah.
So, we're just gonna do an S C P. And wanna. Did that, which was that twelve, right?
Yeah, I believe, but it is.
That, uh, looks good to me.
There you go.
Now we can run the same command.
Cluster two D B. Oh, I was looking for two.
What do you mean? Did I name it something else? Oh, I'm misnamed it.
Remove the, yeah, or either we misnamed or removed the cluster one.
Well, I guess it shouldn't really matter, if, I can just restore it from cluster one. I, I, it's supposed to be named cluster two D B, but it shouldn't really matter. So we're just gonna go ahead and restore for cluster one. Cuz this is, even though it says cluster one, this is the backup for cluster two.
Gosh, gosh.
Alright, so, once we have that restored, we're gonna go ahead and edit our H C D manifest. Hmm, so with this, we have to go over to our external. H C D. So, let's go ahead and open another one. S H. H C D. Server, I believe, was its name, perfect. Should be interesting. Well, so we just gotta go find a data directory. Which we can do a P S, dash E F. H C D. How that works? We would have to edit the service, right?
Well, I think we should just edit the, um, the, the, the file, the static file, right?
Did, is it set up the same way? Would there be, oh, actually, they have their own directory here. Just, see. Do they have a file in, so they don't have a file in here too?
No, it doesn't, so it doesn't have a, 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 the Kubernetes one, just to make sure.
Cuz it shouldn't.
Unless, okay, so we should be going into the, um, the actual API server, right, and then changing the, where it's pointing, the H C D information. Cuz it doesn't know, unless. I'm thinking out, of this out loud to with you, so, um, yeah, this is a, this is an interesting set of questions, so.
Take a look at that.
But I think you disabled it, huh?
Yeah, but we can still. Yeah, but we can still edit it.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, let's take a look at that. Over here. We'll still have the C D server. I think I think we have to configure the server itself. To use the new files.
I think it's the the server itself, the this where you're at right now, you updating that, right? So you you update the. The um. The new the new path. Here, and then. So it says like data deer, but it doesn't say data deer on there anywhere.
No, that would be under S C D. Information.
Yeah, 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 you're right. You're right.
I'm thinking about it. We just gotta modify this. So which means we just need to move our file to this server, really.
Remember, data directory should be empty, right?
This directory is not gonna be empty. Is there old directory that was being used?
Yeah.
So we just need to modify it. We just need to add. Our new directory uh to the server and then point this, change what this is pointing to. I guess I could just. Have it be the same thing. The new path, restore to a new path. They're not a file. I feel like there's a file somewhere that we can edit here. The service file. Slash it's the slash system. Aha, there it is. That's what I'm looking for. Ah, perfect. So here, but we still need to move the file. But we can edit this to point to the. New directory. Everything else looks good to me. Now we just need to get. That file on here and then we 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 probably have to restart that service. Yeah, we'll have to restart the service, but I wanna get the file here first. So we created a file here.
Or live, was this?
We created here. There we go. Okay. So now we're just gonna move this sucker. C P. We know that he has the key to that guy, or we'll have to. Do a couple jumps. So we want to S C P the file that we wanna move, which is gonna be our very. S C D that a new. We wanna move it to. Server here. Is the I P. And same directory. So I have to. Have to finagle it. So we'll have to go over here, pull it here.
Can you do me a favor? Can you cat and let's see what's inside that actual file, that var lib at city new data?
I see what you think you you should. I see your thought process.
Yeah. So it might just be a empty file. So. Or just well, yeah, L S it and see um what's in there. Oh, so there's stuff in there.
Okay. It's not really gonna work.
Yeah.
I wonder. I'm just curious here. Can we do S C P? Address here. This. We already had it, actually. File name. This is what I'm curious about. Can we just skip skip it? Just dump it right over there?
Sort of does. Post key verification though.
That's fine. And do it this way.
It's not regular file. It should be like a recursive thing. It should copy everything over. S C P from twelve. Looks like that worked.
What? Does it have the key for it?
Yes, it is still in directory. You can't.
Yeah, I have the wrong I P then.
Oh, you can do that T D server itself too.
Yeah. Okay, so we should be able to do it that way. Alright, perfect.
Okay, cool.
Now, I wanna restart the service. C D.
Here, you know, the first cluster state. It's not a thing. There's a week. Not gonna lie, I'm curious to see what they what they have as a solution.
Let's find out, right?
Yeah, let's just see.
New system D. Yep, we did that. Are we supposed to just erase everything else?
I don't know why my camera can't really see that well what it's saying.
It's saying the ownership of the. The directory, so let's see.
That works.
It does. So are you going? Are you going through all this trouble because you're doing it? Everything is being done locally?
No, I'm going through all this trouble because. They're all on different, all of the files are on different servers, so we've been having to move them around. Actually, I wanna see this here. C D data.
Yeah.
And let's see. How does the command work again?
Um. Yeah, look at the help.
We don't got that much time, so I'm just gonna.
Yeah. Oh, minus R and T D and C D.
This, I'm assuming that's the only thing that we missed is just changing the ownership. Let's go ahead and try to restart it. I started the service.
Okay, go ahead.
And I wanna do a P S. Perfect, and it is using the new directory.
Beautiful.
So now we need to come over to cluster two.
We didn't modify the A P I server.
We gotta bring it back up. We gotta bring it back up.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that C D is not gonna show up here, right? Because of the fact that it's an external one.
Um, we still should be with this, because it's still. Part of the cluster, it should still show. I'm I'm thinking. They still should be able to communicate, right?
Oh, it is work.
It's not on there. Okay, hey, yeah. Oh, yeah, S T D close, N C D closer control. Perfect, that was a.
Let's see, is is it perfect?
Objects restored.
Think it's using the wrong S T D cluster here.
Because what it is.
We get more time.
We got two minutes.
There's no way to extend it, alright.
No. But.
We miss.
Let's see. Okay, they even reload. David, I'm definitely gonna redo this.
What is this S C D? Where did he get that guy from? This is like an internal one that is pulled up? Yeah. So. Hold on, can we just uh? R M slash S C. Ladies. Where is he getting that S T D? From? Why does it wanna use an internal one now?
Well, S T D, the file is S T D, right? I think it's just called, it's it's S T D, I believe.
Because, well, you you remember before cluster two had an external S T D, so you couldn't see it here. It's using cluster ones. See that? Using cluster ones at C D Y.
Look inside the full manifest file, see what's in there.
Yeah, I did see that. As you. Can see, we only have A P S server, control manager, scheduler.
Yeah. Is it because you named it the first one? Because I remember we named, you sure we removed the right file over?
That's probably what it is. Maybe I moved their own file completely.
Yeah, I think it was the, because you had two. It was one and two. They were both in there.
I'll redo this one and um we'll come back around to it next week. Well, actually. Next week is.
Christmas, yeah, well, no, well, it's wrong, it's holiday period, so, yeah.
Next week is Christmas, so in the case that we do not have a event, I'll just do a solo. Video by itself that just goes over this. And yeah, we'll just, we'll just rerun it.
Okay.
Till we till we get it.
Yeah, I'm at the lab. Actually, if you want, we can laugh together on that one, um but for sure, I need to. Get better at this myself, so yeah, this is a, this is a good session.
Alright, bet, bet. Did anybody, I know, we got lost, so I'm assuming you guys got lost as well. So any questions, comments, concerns?
All good.
Yeah, that was good, that was good, man.
So this is still gonna be going up on YouTube, so just keep keep a lookout for the next video where we're gonna just go over this again till we get it right. Of course, as always, just thank you for watching and if you are watching, well, you're watching on YouTube, just go ahead and uh. Like and subscribe the video if you find this information valuable and you can always shoot me a message on LinkedIn if you wanna join us. Uh, in. Getting uh. Getting acquainted with Kubernetes. Thank you for watching and I'll see you guys on the next one.